Good evening and welcome to the, I don't know what date, February 23rd, meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District Workshop. I'd like to officially call this workshop "To Order." And having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. DeFalco. And we can't hear you.
Jason, your lips are moving, but...
That sounds like a song, you know, lips are moving, but...
I think it is a song.
Right? Lips are moving.
Comfortably numb.
You're numb?
No, it's comfortably numb. Thank Floyd.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I was thinking of the newer one with that, "If your lips are moving, if your lips are moving, then you'll..." I think that's the one Jane got.
That's the one I'm thinking of.
Jack, I'm with you on comfortably numb, but I think Jane's thinking of the newer one.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. I don't know, it's one of my microphones acting kind of funny.
Okay, sounds like a personal problem.
Well, it could be the fact that it's, we're on, you know, our 11th Zoom meeting for the day. So maybe my microphone's just not wanting to function now. And I just caught what she said, Jane, well, that was lovely.
Apparently my- I love that Matt sang it as it's actually recorded as well, so we'll just play back forever.
Apparently my ears are not working either. Anyhow, it was nice to see everybody. Oh, thanks, Jane.
It's still lovely to see you, Jason.
It is still good to see everybody. No, thank you for the time. I know we're going to talk a bit about next steps with our FY '22 budget. You should have received yesterday two important attachments. One is the detailed budget, or as Jane would refer to it, the glue stick budget, that has all of the in-the-weeds kind of details about what is in each of the specific budget lines. And the second attachment was summation of what the cost center managers asked for, minus athletics, which we'll talk about in a minute. And what we did was we actually put together the cover sheet that outlined what was removed from there, or reduced. And then we went through each of the cost center specific requests and highlighted right from the sheets, so that you could see everything in one place. So we wouldn't have to flip back and forth through a bunch of different documents. And the idea there was to show the committee, at least at this stage in the process where we've landed, on the specific requests for materials and staff. And then be able to, from there, decide kind of the direction in which we want to move, knowing that the overall, currently, at our last iteration, the overall budget increase is about 2.7 for the district, with about a 1% increase for Millville, and about a 3.7 increase for Blackstone. So we thought that might be a good jumping off point, because we know from here, we have the public hearing on March 11th, followed by our school committee meeting, and then we have a Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting on March 16th. So we thought this additional workshop would be critical in terms of trying to settle on our priorities and the final numbers moving forward.
Jason, may I ask a question? At the, well, I don't know if it was the last Board of Select, Blackstone Board of Selectmen meeting, but a recent one. Bob Kluchewitz indicated that he had asked for a copy of this line item detail. Did that go out to whomever requested it?
So Tammy, I requested that we not send it out until we certify a budget, because I don't want folks to go through something we haven't certified yet. So nobody, and we did tell people that, but we will be glad to share our budget, our current budget, and we'll be glad to share our proposed budget once we actually have it.
I'm concerned about the transparency of that, just for the record.
It's not something we've ever shared with anyone, because it's not-
It's public record as of this minute, because it's in this meeting, correct?
As of this, well, no, no, because we may change it. It's a working document.
This version is public record.
This version is a working document in our workshop. Because we have never, we have not approved any of this. We haven't even looked at this.
Just because it was sent to us in an email, it's not in a meeting tonight. Like if we were, once it's certified, is when we usually would share this.
Yep. Yep.
Like we could give them last year's, like if they really wanted something to look at.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We can give them the current one, and then they can compare, and... But we don't ever share line item until we've either certified it or until it's an approved budget. And we specifically, we were asked to go to different meetings, and we specifically asked to hold off going until we knew the dollars we were going to ask for.
Okay, so do we, I guess the focus of this evening is to really settle the priorities and see if the school committee's comfortable with where things currently are, if there are things that have been removed that they would like to see restored, or other things removed that we haven't removed. So, you know, I don't know if we want to start with what has been, you know, reduced and taken out, which I can share my screen if folks want and share the document, or you might have it all in front of you, so we don't need to do that. But we can walk through that document to see if that might be a good place to start. And then as far as athletics, on the March 11th meeting, we'd like to talk about the uniform cycle with the school committee. We'll have a couple of proposals for the school committee to review. We have the money in the revolving fund, frankly, now. So we just want to make sure that the committee decides on the replacement cycle that they're comfortable with moving forward. So we didn't have to put it in here, because we already have the, we already have the dollars, frankly. We just have to settle on the cycle we want to use for uniform replacement.
Is that the case for the outdoor storage also, Jason? Because there's no dollar amount next to storage for outdoor sports equipment, and I don't really know what that is.
Yeah. Matt, do you want to speak to that? I know that that was a request from Robert.
Yeah, that was, that was a proactive request from Robert. I think we've held off on that right now as we're putting together the capital subcommittee. I'm not sure if it'll become of that scale or not, but I think it's definitely part of the conversations that we would have in that subcommittee.
So to Sarah's point, there's no dollars in the budget then, for this shed?
I apologize if I missed the specific answer. Yes, there's, there's nothing allocated specifically in here.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, Sarah.
I knew, I just didn't say anything.
So do we want to walk through the reduction summary that we had? And we can kind of talk through how we got to the numbers we have. Okay, so we started the elementary envisioned workbooks. We actually can order those now out of our textbook line. So we were able to reduce the 22,000 out of next year's budget requests. We reduced one of the two math interventionists by 1 FTE. We reduced one of the, the full-time night custodian at the elementary level to a .5. We removed the ELA intervention position at the high school, and instead are working with the guidance staff to look at ELA teacher schedules, to see if there's something we might be able to do a little bit different. But we left the math intervention position in. We reduced the high schools, we took, they don't have it currently, but we, we did not include the high school's additional PE teacher for the additional phys ed electives that they wanted to offer next year. The special education, I know Jill's on, so she can address these if there are any specific questions here. But we reduced and removed the .5 learning PK coordinator and chair, and we removed the teacher of the deaf, or reduced rather, excuse me, by about 30,000. So if you had an opportunity to, or if not, and you have the chance now, and you scroll through, you'll see we highlighted only what we took out. And that was intentional, because it gives a really good sense of everything else that the cost center managers asked for is in their budget. It's there, it's in this budget. So I know in the, in the past budget cycles, we've really kind of gone through that process of, you know, and that difficult conversation of, I wish we could fund, you know, A, B, and C at the high school, or we keep coming back to us and we can't do it. You know, I think this year, we've been as creative as we have, as we can be, and have prioritized in a way that allows us to actually fund the majority of what the cost center managers, which came up through their teachers and their instructional leadership teams, asked for, minus what we put in the cover sheet.
And that's appreciated. I mean, that's, that's really great. How much of, and I know I've seen, looking at these two attachments, though I don't see it, how much of E and D will we need to use to supplant this budget? And then I still have the vinyl materials question, Matt, when we, after we get to the E and D question.
I believe it was $140,000.
Oh, okay, great.
I can pull, I'll pull up a budget. I'm limited on my screen space right now, so I'm just gonna, I'll try to pull something up just to confirm. But I'm pretty sure it's, it's about 140.
Okay.
Yeah, it says 140.
You do, Tara, thank you.
I was happy, yeah.
Okay, I know we had it, I just have the two things up and not that third.
I know I have it all committed to memory, but sometimes I just like to refer back so that I don't misspeak.
And I have the hard copy, Matt, if you need it.
Great.
So, so looking at the high school, I still have this question of, and I know it's silly, I know it's $500, but they're, under graphics, they're asking for $500 of vinyl materials. Last year, they had $500, no, no, I'm not, I just had it two seconds ago. Vinyl materials, they had $500. So last year, they had 500, which should still be in the budget, and they're asking for another 500, so they're really asking for $1,000 in vinyl materials?
No, they're asking for the $500 in vinyl materials. I'm double check, I'm just double checking any actual line item pieces. The high school's got a pretty large budget, so just wanted to get through to bed. I can return to that as well, while I'm skimming through this.
Wouldn't that just mean they're asking for it again? Like they used $500 last year?
No, but they wouldn't have to ask for it again, because the 500, so if it was built into last year's budget, there's $500 in last year's budget. So yeah, they want it, still spend it on that again, I get that, but it should already be in there to spend it, like it doesn't go away.
Right, so they didn't have to ask for it.
It was just misplaced there. It's $500 for vinyl materials. That's on page 19, it's about, it's on page 19 of the-
The big thing, yep.
Ledger, and it's like about a third of the way down.
Okay, so it's only-
It's 500.
Okay.
Is that the case for the Tuba too? I hate even asking about the Tuba again, but I have to.
Because we had the Tuba in there before.
Yeah, that Tuba request is the same request.
Okay.
And Todd didn't, didn't have the Tuba company that he wanted.
Right. But we're not putting another thousand, I mean, we're just, what was in there is in there, and we're doing the Tuba.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then, and then we can, are we ever going to be able to say goodbye to the Tuba? Don't answer that.
No, I have-
They're building an entire section.
A whole Tuba, a fleet of Tuba's.
Exactly.
Okay, I have a question about the reduction in math interventionists. Like how many students can one math interventionist provide services for?
So here, here was our, our thought process on that. So it's actually kind of twofold. So if you look at the middle school, we increased the middle school reading specialist by a .5. Right now, Jenny and Tanya share, they, Jenny has her own reading specialist, but then she has an additional .5 that she shares, the other .5s at the middle school. What we talked about was moving the 1.0 reading specialist to the high school, I'm sorry, to the middle school, and then having Jenny use that .5, and she may decide that she needs to hire a part-time math interventionist on top of the 1.0. So we might actually just realign what we already have. And then we're looking at the two STEM teachers. We left the two STEM teachers in the budget. So we discussed saving a couple of blocks of their schedule for them to do additional math intervention. So we're trying to find a couple of ways to get, to get that work done, you know, creatively.
Okay.
Saving an FTE.
So I mean, we're, we're going to see a need, a huge need.
What about savings, by saving, by reducing it to one? Was it 50,000, or was it higher?
It was about 60, I think we put in the, in the budget for it. Yeah, so, so what, what, frankly, what probably would happen is that .5 would actually probably go to Millville. And then the 1.0 would probably be at the complex, because the complex is going to have more, still have more students. That was what we had discussed tenatively. And then if we need the extra sections, they probably, those extra sections would probably be at Millville. Not trying to get like into weeds, but just how we, how we thought through it as the elementary principals.
Well, I'm glad to hear that there's a backup plan, because when I read through the list first, I was like, that's a high need.
I know.
So why, why would we be cutting that? But hearing what your thought process is, it helps.
Yeah, that was what we were thinking, way we could do that, kind of get two bites of that apple.
And to your point, Erin, we tried to do that with almost all of these pieces. You could see, as Jason mentioned, and Jill can speak to it if there's real questions, but like the teacher of the deaf, we can't eliminate that entirely. We need to make sure we're providing those services. So we transformed it into contracted services that we're going to, that we'll source out. So we'll still make sure that those needs are met.
Oh, Matt, you shouldn't have referred me to page 19. Now I've seen glue sticks in there four times, and I've also seen rubber cement. Gallants of rubber cement. Got to have what you got to have.
There are a number of classes that use glue sticks, as well as rubber cement, so I can't-
No, 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 I've just, I just, it's just me. It's not, I don't question it, I just, it is what it is, and-
Jane, don't you want to know what the BRC game element kit is, right under the vinyl?
No, I wanted to know what $10,000 PLTW was, but-
Project Lead the Way.
Project Lead the Way. That's, that's for the grant, we have to match the funding with $10,000 worth of materials.
Jason, you knew that one, we were ready for that one.
Right on. That's because we're writing another grant for the middle school right now, for different units that we're looking to put in place that are actually really impressive, yeah. Green engineering and art green architecture, and I'm telling you, the middle school's taking off with their STEM work as well. So they'll be really primed for the high school when they hit it. It's awesome. That will all be grant funded too.
Nice.
I, I, I don't know where to go from here, but I, I have two questions. We just mentioned page numbers, so I have a question about one thing on the page. But I, I think what I want to mention is my concern for the use of 140,000 E and D with the number that we got certified via email this weekend. I personally, I don't know that we can fund that out of our E and D. And I don't know how anyone else feels, but when I saw that number come through, I will say in my nine years, that's the lowest it's ever been certified. So are we still comfortable seeing that number and use, in recommending 140,000?
I am definitely comfortable with that number and recommending 140,000.
So 50 of that is for OPAB?
50 of it is-
And then 90 is for just kind of the COVID recovery expenses?
Yeah, there were, there were non-recurring costs that we were putting, putting to E and D.
I agree that it is a big number to take from a small number.
But that certi, that certified number doesn't account for what we pulled out this year that we didn't use, right?
Correct. That's why, that's why I'm very comfortable with it.
Well, where is that money then? I thought we didn't pull it out, we didn't use it, so we didn't pull it out.
So once, so what happened last year is that as, well, I don't even know, it might have been this year when we were approving things. No, we were actually on time, the state wasn't.
Right.
Last year, when we approved the FY '21 budget, because we feared a shortfall in Chapter 70 funds, we allocated E and D money into this year's budget. Once it's actually allocated and approved as being a source of revenue for this budget, it's, it's there. So what's going to happen is, we budgeted for our Chapter 70. Remember, we lowered the Chapter 70 revenue by like $460,000, and then we supplemented it with E and D, or three, yeah, four something. And then our Chapter 70 came in full. So that money should be going back down to the bottom of the, the chart for this year. When we get FY '21 E and D certified, it should be higher.
Correct.
So the certified number is wrong.
Is small.
It's-
It's deceptively small. Well, no, I shouldn't say deceptively small, that's a horrible word. It's confusing, it could be a bit confusing, because all, we, Jason and I spoke about the same thing. It was a question actually that I had for the DOR, whether we use that money or not. They, because it was earmarked to be-
It's not counted.
They removed it from their E and D calculation.
Correct.
So what is that number?
No, we need to, so you're expecting our budget to end this year in a positive, that, that amount, and then whatever other line items?
Correct.
We are, okay, so just a quick question, because I don't want to lose track of that. I, I didn't know that. Just for an instance, Jason just said the envisioned workbooks, we're going to purchase them this year. So are you taking that money separate from leaving an overage for FY '21? We're not going to pre-purchase using our E and D? Are we, is our plan to put it back? Or are we going to pre-purchase, because we're looking at overages on our, our cheat sheet?
Our plan, our plan was to take it out of one of the lines this year, and if that line happens to go into the negative, then we will end up seeing an overage that will cover, that will cover that, yes.
All right, I'm sorry, I got lost somewhere there, I apologize, but-
Neither, Matt.
No, we have to, we have to charge every expense to an account line. So whether there was funding, so as you're seeing in advance, we put all of these things into the account lines. We made, this year, those books, the Envisions books, will get charged to elementary school textbooks. It'll be split between the complex and Millville. That much money may not be in those lines right now. But then at the end, when we make transfers to cover any shortfalls across function codes, it will get, it'll get covered. So will it eat away at a bit of what we're expecting to be in E and D for FY '21? Yes.
But can I, can I address that exact question about the workbooks, Erin? Just so you know, we have money in our textbook line that we're actually charging that to. So it's not, it's not going to be E and D money, just so you're-
So, but in my mind, and I might be doing this backwards, so correct me, please, because I'm visioning this now, we're certified at 414, right?
411.
411?
411.
411, 257.
So we're certified at 411, we're earmarking 140,000, so no matter what, they're taking it out. That's going to bring us down to 271. If, if we end the year with any money, it rolls in. But if we end the year at zero, our E and D will be 271, certified next year, thereabouts, hoping no catastrophes. Am I right, or am I doing that backwards?
You are correct, but we are not going to end the year with zero money.
Okay, so would it be easier, or would it feel better, to try to find 140 here and do pre-purchases and take out any transfers? So we're not, so we're not going down to 271 on a, does that make sense?
Yeah, you're saying what can we buy now out of?
What can we spend, 100, so what can we spend now 140,000 on? Because you're saying the money is already out of that account, so we don't have to wait for it to roll back in, go to 271, and then-
My, my concern with that, Erin, is that we would then be taking things out of a budget, which would make a future budget hard to build when you don't have the E and D, you don't have that balance that could be there.
But it's going to make it look this year like we had a huge surplus that we never should have had.
Well, yes, but I think people are expecting that, because we budgeted for worst-case scenario with the, with, which didn't happen.
And I, and I don't, I personally don't want to see a certified E and D of 270, under 300,000 next year.
I don't, you won't.
That won't happen.
You won't.
Do we know how much that E and D is about for the year that we didn't use?
465.
465?
Yeah.
Would be the, I'm sorry.
That was the FY '20 E and D that we rolled into the FY '21 budget that we didn't need.
That we haven't used.
Yep. How much? 400 and-
267, I think it was 467.
So we have almost 900,000 in E and D?
Yeah.
In theory.
If that goes back. But our budget looks like we're in the black 280.
Right, that's right.
So the 467 minus 280.
No, the force, this is, so there's, Matt, you might, you should explain this in the manner that you've got the 280 that's left, plus you have the E and D that is not expended, that's not part of that 280.
So, okay, so when we review, when we review the expenditures each month, those are just the expenditures. It's, and when, that's why the revenues and the expenditures, we review those reports separately. So all of those expenditures that we look at are balanced against what we said our revenues will be. And in our revenues, we said we were going to get 300,000 less in Chapter 70, but we didn't. And we said we were going to spend 100 and some odd thousand, I believe it was 167,000, on the literacy curriculum materials. But we were able to purchase those last year. So the 167 for the literacy materials that we moved over, and the 300 to supplement the Chapter 70 shortfall, there, it's there in the revenue side. But in the expenditure, when you see that, when you see that we're in the black, the 280, that's just from our expenses. So that's comparing it to, however we got those revenues, the expenses are balanced. The expenses are still showing that will be 280 in the black. That's not including the money that we put from E and D that we're not using. The revenue's separate than the expenses in those reports. So if we showed a shortfall in revenue, as well as that 280 in the black in the expenses, that would be a different story, but right now, we're not predicting a shortfall in revenue. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? I. I hope.
I think so.
I can certainly prepare something for the committee.
I guess, could I, could I ask just sort of straightforward, when, when all of the, this all happens, right? What do you, Jason and Matt, as you look at all of these factors, expect to be an E and D certified next year? If nothing else major happens that we have to deal with?
Yep. So we would, what we would look at is the four eleven that we have now minus the 140 that we discussed that we would want to pull. Then we have the two eighty that we're projecting to be, right? So did it, what's the four eleven minus 140? So what is that number?
Two seventy-one. Two seventy-one.
Okay, so two seventy-one. Then we have the two eighty that we're projecting, again, conservatively projecting we should have left. Right? So you've got the two eighty plus the two seventy-one.
Five fifty-one.
Five fifty-one. Then you have the four sixty-seven that we want to have a discussion with the capital committee about if there's. Uh, sure, we're ready to do the realignment of the elementary schools. So we'll want to drop down on that four sixty-seven to do some of that work. So say we spend 200 of that, right? Just, so you say we've got two sixty-seven left. You've got the two sixty-seven plus the five fifty-one. That would be our new E and D number.
Eight eighteen.
Yeah, yep, ballpark, somewhere around there.
That's. Barring spending anything somewhere around a million.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep. Or barring any emergency.
Yeah.
Right, which, which, it's an emergency. If we, if we, if we're planning it now, it's not an emergency. Okay, so, okay.
Does that give a better picture?
But that won't be certified until next February?
Jason, did you minus the 140 for the budget? Yes, he did.
That was the first step.
Tara, it's usually certified much sooner than this. I just think this year was unreasonably slow.
Yeah, I feel like it's around December or January, I think.
Yeah.
It's, it's late, it's usually late January.
Yeah.
It also depends on what's happening with the towns because the DOR certifies the tax rates first and they, they do all of the town stuff. They want to make sure that they get those in. I can't say where they'll be next year, given piggybacking off of this year.
Thank you for that, gentlemen.
Any other concerns? Or questions or issues to address?
An E and D or everything?
Everything.
So I guess I was questioning how, I know it's been explained, but I just, how we only want to use half of the COVID funding, so only using two seventy of the five forty. If we're taking money from other places, I don't know, is it better just to use the five forty now and not take from other places?
Our thinking with that was to use that money to fund the, the additional intervention. We wanted to be able to make sure that the positions, we don't want to add permanently to the budget, but those kind of temporary positions, that we would have enough money to cover those for the couple of years.
I tried to maintain consistency with which funds we would be using for what types of purchases. So the, as Jason said, that grant funding is specifically allocated to positions that are returning recovery, whereas the E and D will cover OPAB and some other, you know, one-time, non-recurring costs.
Right. And we expect that the recovery will take more than just one year.
Absolutely.
Anyone else?
I still had another question back, so I started with E and D. So back to page numbers. On page 10, there are, there's a line item for mentors. Or is that in this year's budget as well?
Yeah, those are new teacher, those are new teacher mentors. We budget for every year for there to be new teacher mentors.
So we do have mentors currently?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that, and is that a stipend?
Yes.
I think it was 12,000.
I think it's $750 per, um, I think it's, I have to double check the contract. I think it's 750 per mentee. And, but it changes depending upon the year because under the, the, the education regulations, you have to have mentoring for, I believe it's three years. And your first year in mentoring looks different than your second and third year. So there's a different rate for that. Your first year obviously is more because you're doing more, you know, one-on-one work, the mentor, mentee. And then we have two mentor coordinators, our coaches, that's split. Jeff mentors, uh, coordinates the mentors for the secondary level and Mary, our coach, coordinates them for the elementary. So they, they share that. It's not two, the same stipend. They split the one stipend.
And those are within that same line item, Jason? Is that what you're saying?
I am pulling that up.
Mentor, the mentors of the mentors?
It's at the bottom, very last line at the bottom of page 10, Jason.
They're under professional development, so those must be the teacher mentors.
They are, those are.
I have it right here. Okay. Thank you, Matt, for that. I just was trying to get the document up.
Yeah.
Uh, those are the mentor coordinators. Tammy?
Erin.
I thought Tammy had asked the mentors of the mentors. Right? Was that you, Tammy?
Well, I was just asking, when you mentioned the mentors of the mentors.
Yeah, those are the coordinators.
Is that still in that same line item? And that was my question. That additional stipend that the coaches are getting, does that, is that included in that 12,000 of the mentor line?
Yes, I think that's, I think that includes the total amount. Yes. Yeah.
I have a question on that page if you want to stay there. Um, salary for library. Does the high school librarian has additional duties, I'm assuming, based on her salary?
Yeah, she's a teacher.
So that includes her teaching salary as well?
Can you share with me where you are, Tara, and I can say specifically?
It's just above the mentor line about, I don't know, eight or nine.
Okay.
Lines up.
Thank you. Oh, I see it right here. Salary other high school. Yes. So she is actually a Unit A member. And she teaches AP Computer Science and she teaches some virtual high school.
Okay. So she's not in the teacher salary line that's in the earlier pages. Her salary just all moved to this line.
Correct.
So right above that, all the library pairs are together. I, I know it's going to be the first year that we're moving into the regional agreement for the elementary buildings, but this is just a good example, I think. The, the library, JFK Library AFM. It equals a one, apparently a full-time person. If, if we were to look at this differently and, and make that one school in our budget, would we find other savings along the way?
Those, the costs are typically split in half for those, for those items. So we know that something costs $12,000. I charge six of it to AFM and six of it to JFK. The Department of Ed still has the two schools with their own, they do have their own codes. So I can, I can look into the process for having them change their coding as well. But to your point of like the savings, I don't, I don't think there would be any savings by combining the two pieces. Typically, everything is just split in half.
So how are we, um, next year, second, third, fourth and fifth will be in that building, correct?
Yes.
And then the following year will be third, fourth, fifth.
Right.
So eventually there's going to be a more even split of the students, in, in my opinion.
Yes.
Um, so even looking at this, just because this is a good example, the Millville library is only a point four, which we, the, the two point fives equal a 1.0 for, for the complex. Eventually that, things like that are going to shift based on the, the number of students. How are we dividing the kids, two, two through five, next year within the two buildings?
When you ask how, do you mean like what actual wing will be, will they be in?
Yeah. Are we going to have like second and third graders saying, I go to JFK?
I was just gonna say, what's their reporting? Yeah.
Or are they going to the complex?
Yeah, yes. Great question. Jenny has this already laid out and I, I recall a discussion with her. The second graders for next year will be, I think, on the JFK side. And I think the third, fourth and fifth will be, or the bulk of the fourth and fifth and the third will be on the AFM side. But there might be a couple of third grade classes on the JFK side, but then that will shift the following year when the second graders are not here.
So I, I mean, I think, I think it would be worth our time in the next year to, to try to combine these two into one for, just for, for the parent's sake, for the student's sake. And I, as many things as I had to add up today, it just hit me that there has to be, there, I, I think we're going to find savings without reductions, just because it's becoming, you know, the, the secondary building. It might not be a lot, but I think there are going to be more than what we pay for glue sticks in, in combined. For things that are duplicated in here.
I agree. I was thinking the same thing. It'd be nice to see that building merged into one of the budget.
It's going to be interesting if the kids say what school they go to next year, I think. It, it will definitely be dictated how, I guess, on how they're, they start the year there, but what are we going, how are we going to refer to it?
I've, I've heard, and I, I use this language, Jenny does too, I know, that, that just JFK AFM complex, like they, or just the complex. They refer to it as the one, one building. But we, there certainly are things that we can do to take official action on that.
Yeah.
You know, if the committee would like to do that.
And I think that's not the top of the priority list, but as I went through this today, it, it hit me more and more that there are definitely things that we will be able to work on.
Well, and I think there are things that we're going to have to look at. I think you bring up the library para. That's a great example. You know, my sense is MES will need a full library para. I mean, they're going to have more kids, more students than they've had before. They're going to have, you know, not this upcoming year, but the year after, you know, full complement of pre-K, K1 and 2. So they're going to have to have that individual there full time.
Yeah. And, and we might just assume that for all specials or, and maybe even heavier on other services because of the pre-K. So they have that.
And that's going to be interesting too, because where our hope, as you know, is to expand, expand the pre-K and offer full day, you know, five full day opportunities for families. So fingers crossed. I hope that's like, I hope that's a big pull to wait and see what we get, you know, for a draw on that. Because that could change the number of sections for enrichments and things too.
Well, and I think all that shift also is going to shift supplies, right? I mean, if you have a K through to school, your fifth grade books are going to shift most likely to the, like, there's a lot of that sort of background things that are going to happen at, at the school levels, right? I mean.
To your point.
Organizing the materials and things, yeah.
You're right that the, the materials as well as the people are going to shift, but even beginning this year, Christina and Jenny sat down with both of their budgets and looked at where certain things were going to have to go, at least from a preliminary perspective. A lot of the shifts will be just that. It may just be a shift. It, it may not end up in a, in a reduction because we still have the same number of, you know, some supplies, yes, some personnel possibly. And that's why the whole time we, we weren't saying the purpose is to save money. The number of kids aren't really changing. So it's just a matter of where the money is getting directed.
Can I ask, can I go back to the technology additions? Padlet Pro and NearPod. It's only like, it's 6,000 bucks, right, for the two of them? But are they? I don't know. I had a question mark next to them.
So, so EdPuzzle is more like NearPod. So those were, are the two that you can, but you know, it, it, it really.
But to your point, EdPuzzle, EdPuzzle is at the middle school and NearPod is at the high school, I believe.
Yes, that is correct.
So are they not, are they not district licenses then? They're school licenses?
Nope, they're specifically numbered licenses for the teachers that are going to use them.
Okay.
And I did go back after that conversation to ensure that we weren't replicating those similar platforms. Did go back to the principals and had them confirm all of that. So they specified which ones were specific to the middle and which were specific to the high school.
Seems to me I saw them in both though, Matt. Maybe not. Maybe not. No, maybe not. You're right. It's on page 26. That helps.
What is?
The news that a Padlet.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm looking at the other document though. Thought I saw both, both places, but. So I guess I just have a very general.
Between the middle, you may have seen it duplicated between one of the schools and the technology.
Yeah.
So that, that's a possibility too, Jane.
I just, so I guess I wonder, like who comes through this? And I assume the principals do. But to, to catch things like if we needed us, I mean, do we order a scientific calculator every year? Like is it, we just replace one a year? Is that what we do? Because again, it was there before. It was there last year. It's in here, you know, it's in the budget again as a last year's expense. But like at what point, is that like a, like the Chromebooks where we just keep replacing, replacing one?
We do typically replace a lot of the equipment in that fashion.
Okay.
That's why you won't see, you won't see 150 scientific calculators.
Right.
You'll see smaller batches regularly. And the, the, you know, the teachers, the teachers and the cost center leaders, the ILT, the principals get the information also from, from their staff. So they work with their staff to identify the specific needs. So even to the classroom level, they'll know, well, I'm missing five calculators. I need to get this this year. But you're right, sometimes it's just, let's get the typical replacement number. Some of it's anticipatory. You know, we never know exactly how many kids are going to bust their calculators.
I'm pretty sure the kids have to buy their own. No? But it doesn't matter. There's just.
I can attest yes to that.
Yeah.
After $250 calculators.
Exactly.
I may have cited the wrong equipment. Apologies.
No, that's okay. I knew what you meant.
I am sure that they have classroom sets for people that don't, you know, or forget them or whatever. You know, there's lots of things.
Yeah, when I went through, there were also the ones that school helped for anyone on free introduced.
Yeah.
Usually apply for. Usually apply for one.
Can, and I, can I ask a question? So right now, Karen Young is nurse supervisor, right? Is that her official title right now?
Lead nurse.
Yeah, I'm lead nurse.
Okay. So what happens with that for next year? Does she then go back to the high school? It, it does, why is that not a cut position? Or is that just because it's COVID one time type thing?
So, great question. Actually, we have a meeting with Karen Friday morning, frankly, at 11:30 to discuss this in more detail.
But Jason, sorry, not just Karen, but that whole thing, like.
Yeah, the LPNs and.
She's just the easy one to, she had a position, COVID made, made it change. So just in general, those people.
No, that's a great question. So the majority of the COVID positions will go away. They'll dissolve at the end of this school year. Partner teachers and, you know, most of the LPNs were, were thinking. We hope, right? That's kind of the goal, frankly. However, a couple of things. One, with some of the folks that we brought on board in these partner teacher roles, I was sharing with Jane earlier in the week. It's been a great recruiting strategy, frankly. And where we are looking to move some of those folks into permanent positions that we're gonna have open. You know, folks that are retiring or moving on to other opportunities. But those roles will end, right? Those, those are always kind of temporary roles. The lead nurse position, because we don't think COVID's gonna magically go away. We wish it would, but I'm sure there are gonna be situations that we're gonna have to navigate next year. So we did have a, a very preliminary discussion with Karen about looking at the lead nurse position more as like a stipended position where she would still be assigned to a building, but be able to have and manage some of those responsibilities that would require some work beyond the school day. And looking at, like for instance, we have that AED coordinator, right? That we've all, we have discussed, that's on whatever, $1,200 or something. So we talked about looking at some existing stipended positions that maybe could combine that we already have. And, and maybe doing something creatively with that or adding a little bit to those responsibilities. In a, you know, in a lead nurse kind of role as we work over time to kind of reshape that. Because I don't, I don't think we're gonna need a permanent full-time person. Like, you know, we have, Karen's not assigned to any of the buildings. She's coordinating our response and, and the work across all the buildings. I'm gonna need that for next year. But what we did discuss is we might need to keep on one of the, the LPNs. Right now we have, you know, we have four. I don't, we don't need all four. We might just need one for next year. And it might be part-time that we need the individual to help. But we don't know yet. We're gonna be finalizing those discussions with Karen. So I do think in the medical side of it, there might be some additional support that we would need. But I don't think it will be a significant expense, anything that we would need to, you know, you know, allocate a new, or approve a new job description or anything along those lines.
I know that's in this line item budget, right?
Thank you.
It would be a more scaled, like a more scaled down version. We've gotta get the final structure that we need for that.
Tara, what was your question?
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh. So none of those LPNs and lead nurses are in this printout, the, the big budget, right?
No. And actually, one of the ideas we were discussing is we do get sub nurses, as I'm sure you're aware when people are out. So we were thinking, we've gotta do a, a cost analysis of what we spend on sub nurses. And we might be able to use those dollars toward like an LPN salary that can fill in. If, you know, the nurse said MES is out or something, we could send the person over to fill in for her for the day, that kind of thing. So I don't, that's, there's not a, there's not a budgetary ask yet, or we, or at all, frankly, we don't, we're not sure it really require anything significant. We might be able to just use better what we have. So we're starting.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Just like we have permanent subs, we could have a permanent LPN sub, whatever you wanna call it.
That's what we were, yeah, that's what we were, we were kind of looking at.
While we're on nurses, on page 29, I see that we have the one at JFK and a half at AFM. Is that just because of the numbers for next year with all four grades in the complex?
They have 1.5 nurses, yeah, at the complex. And then Millville has 1.0.
Yep.
But again, right, like we talked about earlier, my, like, our sense is that's gonna, that's gonna shift. Not this budget cycle, but the next one. Because they're both gonna have virtually the same amount of kids. And frankly, Millville may need more. They're gonna have more little student, you know, younger students over there that, you know, skin their knee and step on their shoelaces and you know, those kinds of things. Little ones often need extra help with.
And then just the salaries, like the middle school nurses at 80,000, the high school is 74. Is that just who we hired? Or is that because of like needs in these buildings?
No, it's, it's just where they are and missteps and lanes.
They're certified staff, right? So it's all based on steps?
Yep. Steps and lanes. Tammy, it looked like you were gonna ask something about the nursing piece. No?
No, I was just thinking about numbers of students in each building where we have one and a half versus one at the, you know, like that. I was just kind of processing through that in my mind.
Yeah. Yeah, the complex had obviously one and a half for, you know, forever, because they had, you know, almost 600 kids. So they had more, you know, students than the other buildings.
Do you have enrollment, what, what is going to look like for next year in each building based on the regional agreement?
Yes. Give me a couple of seconds. I can actually get it, I can get it.
Yeah, that if you want.
Karen, you're a creative night of these numbers.
So Erin, the, the numbers are in, the numbers are in the document that outlines what each one, so kindergarten 110, grade one 111, grade two 108, grade three 119, grade four 126, grade five 108.
Thank you. You start over.
So it's 221 at Millville and 461 at the complex, with the 221 plus whatever PK.
Yeah, we set about 300 with the PK, yeah.
So 110 for kindergarten, 111 for grade one, 108 for grade two, 119 for grade three, 126 for grade four, 108 for grade five.
And what do you estimate preschool at, Jason?
We should be a total right around 300 at Millville for next year.
About 80.
Yep. And then 461 for the complex. Then that'll all reshuffle obviously the next year.
Honestly, that's what I'm trying to figure out is next year's numbers.
So you would, so, yeah.
I've got it. I'm like one number away. So 353 at the complex and 301 at Millville.
Wouldn't be 301 at Millville. It'd be more than that.
It'd be more like 380.
Yeah. They should be roughly around the same.
Yeah, because it'd be the current kindergarten, the current first grade, and then you.
I just had a whole conversation with myself. I'm just done. So I was adding that up. I have, so I have, if we're estimating 80 in preschool each year, but if we have that full day, maybe it'll be a little higher. It looks like it would be 301 in Millville and 350 in Blackstone next year.
It would be 381.
Yeah, you're missing it.
I'm talking about next year.
You're missing it.
I'm gone. I was, the reason I was asking you for that list was, I was trying to figure out where the split would fall next year. Because of all these 0.5's we have, but I know we need to fix this year first.
Did this, then I don't, maybe this is a question for a different meeting, but did this change our transportation expenses significantly or differently?
It did. There was, there is an increase in transportation costs. Because we're gonna need more buses traveling to both schools. So we're estimating that increase at approximately $140,000.
Okay.
So there go our savings on paper. I've merged in the complex.
Remember though, that as we move forward, the hope is 75% of that, that funding will, will be reimbursed. So it sounds like, it sounds like a very large number percentage-wise with respect to the total cost of the transportation. It's not a tremendous percentage increase. And if we subtract that 75% reimbursement that we'll get the following year, it's, it, I wouldn't say that it's negligible, but it's certainly not as signif, as significant.
On page one, what is Aliva's catering under school committee? 4,000? What event is that we normally?
Yeah, that's all, so those are the staff. We do like staff luncheons for the teachers.
We do that at all buildings? Or is that?
Yeah. No, it's, we do it all, we do it at all buildings. We don't do it every professional development day, but we do it like the beginning of the year and I think one of the PD days.
It's the first day, whatever.
Those costs.
Are we, are we putting our user fees back to where they were for next year?
That is the assumption.
And so the revenue you're expecting or, or, so athletics would still be offset by, so, so what we're looking at on a line by line is a full athletics budget? Assuming that, that means, assuming we have all our user fees?
Yes.
Page 34. I, does this, does this look different than past years? Was something re-entered on these lines? I feel like some of the explanations look different to me.
We get new bathrooms?
They're like very generalized and, and, and some of them aren't specific to a sport, unless I'm reading it wrong. So, so just like example, awards earned for excellence in athletics. There's just something wrong. Was it, was it re-entered or merged from another document?
I don't, I'm, I don't understand the question. That was put in by, that was put in by the cost center leader. So that would have been put in by Robert. He may have changed some wording.
Okay.
But that's not like a mix of all kinds of specific to athletics.
I think I'm still on page, well, whatever page I said. It says needed to showcase athletic accomplishments, but I don't know what that means. Like what is needed to showcase athletic, is it a case? Is it a?
Oh, I see.
I just, I don't understand what.
I see. The, the detail, the detail may have printed from a, from the different.
It looks like maybe it merged from another, it's not.
Yeah, it may have mixed up the, the columns, may have been mixed up between the details and the description.
Oh, yeah. He doesn't know how to spell equipment.
Yeah, we need to spell check this too, combative.
Looks like a lot of the line items, without pointing that out, I think a lot of them need to just be like verified for their.
In the actual, in the system, I can, we can see all of what the items are. The description is there. It's just the way that this report generates. So when, when it's viewed in budget sense, or if it's exported in Excel, it'll have a, it'll have a description column and then a detail and notes. I, so when we're looking at the numbers, I can see exactly what that is. But the way that this report generated, I guess the two columns might have been transposed for part of his.
I couldn't tell if they were broken down, if he, if he maybe entered them by sport. Or, because it felt like at the beginning that it was football, then it went, then it went to cheer and then, so I thought it was by sport and then it, and then it goes back to cheer, that it should track. So the, some of the things are, are all over the place. And then, so opportunities for students and coaches to take classes, I think it's going to say classes, but is that something new? Like, and it has $2,000 to the line item, but, or is he just moving other things in his budget too?
That was for the, the training that the coaches are required to have. He's trying to, he's trying to set up a system where we're getting everyone this specific trainings. There's, there's a certain number of trainings that people, I believe, can get as a coach for like a certification through MIAA.
This will be spell checked and cleaned up.
Yeah.
Yep. So this does not include boys tennis? Is that gone forever? I know that we didn't run a team last year due to numbers, but once you don't run a team, does that disappear? Unless I'm missing it, it is, you know.
Not in here.
Okay.
I believe that was based on the numbers that he was projecting.
But girls tennis is, and I don't think we had that either.
I think we had girls tennis. Do we, do we not run either?
Spring. It's in the spring, so I don't know. We wouldn't have had it last year, but.
Well, yeah, yeah. So, but that, I mean, the boys, the boys we purposely didn't run due to numbers. Yeah. And then I was, do we pay fees? Matt, how does it work if we do a co-op? Do we pay anything for co-ops?
Certain co-ops we pay fees for.
I was just trying to find that in, in the desk, but.
I believe, I, I'm, I believe we pay fees for certain ones, but the majority of the, the majority of the costs are from the families.
The stipend under athletic coach, the athletic director is listed at 6,000. Is that part of his salary or?
That's traditionally been the stipend that's in the, in the contract for athletic director. It is part of the, the individual's salary.
Cause I didn't see his salary pulled out in another line. I don't know if I missed it or.
No, he said, he's a, he's a partner teacher this year.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's a unit A contractual stipend.
Looking at the athletic stipends, are we not having any middle school sports anymore?
I, I noticed the basketball was way, the middle school basketball was like all the way at the very top of the line.
Yeah, it's the before.
Yeah, it's on page 34 at the top.
Oh, I see it. Okay. 33, 34.
But shouldn't there be a cross-country?
It's under varsity. I think, I think it's.
I think they're mixed.
I think he's running it as a varsity. If you scroll down, where is it? Cross-country?
There's girls and girls, yeah, girls cross-country.
I think they're, I think our middle school kids are included in that.
There is usually a separate coach, I think, but, and, and track and heel too. They usually have their own middle school and then. middle school and then varsity, JV and varsity. Am I wrong, Tammy? For track and field for middle school?
We've always had two people. I don't know how they were coded.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we had separate. I know, like I've gone to the cross country meets and I know that their middle school kids and high school kids are together with the same coach, but they're just running different, different events.
They, I, I'm, Ms. Finn was always the middle school coach. Last year it was Ms. Cole actually, but, and there was, then there was definitely a varsity coach, so.
I believe in some of these sports, what happens is they go out together and there's a coach and an assistant coach. And the assistant coach works, sometimes the assistant coach works with the middle school kids. They take them off to the side. I believe I'm not on the field with them all the time. Cause there are assistant coaches as well for each of those sports.
For track, for track, boys and girls.
And I, and I've only gone to the regional meets. I should be clear about that. So it, it might be that when, you know, BMR runs against Douglas, it might just be the middle school kids running against the middle school kids. I've gone to the regional, the DVC.
DVC has a middle school state meet and then varsity.
Time though, right? Cause I know I've seen.
Separate, separate events.
They're not on the same day?
No. Middle school is always at, is always at one of the host schools and then their state meet is at Fort Devens in Devens, Mass. And varsity, varsity is not even there on the.
Which is the one at Sutton in the, on the farm?
Well, that was a DVC. Yeah. One of our, one of the host schools.
I see. Cause I've seen the middle and the high school kids running those competitively. So together. Okay.
I have a technology question. On page two and three. So on page three, the tech director is the outsourced company that we use, Dan. But then we also have technicians' salaries. And then on page two, a salary tech ed. None of these are duplicated. These are all actual.
Yeah, those are, I'm sorry, where are you, what are you referring to as tech ed? On what page?
Page three. I'm sorry, page two has the salary tech ed clerk. So that's someone internal, not Dan?
Yes, that's someone internal.
Okay. And then on page three, under Dan, there's salary for technician, tech, tech support and travel.
That's not Dan. So those are two different lines. You see, there's the tech director line, which shows the total, but then it shows the sub, which is only DG networks. And then the salary technician is its own line. And then there's two technicians in that line and then some travel money for them.
So there's three tech people in the district? Cause the one on page two.
Correct.
Third person.
Correct. And some of, and, and actually this year, this was a save, this was a savings to the district. This year, originally there were four individuals that were in the, that were technicians with Dan serving as the consultant supervisor. And one of those positions was eliminated. And Dan is going to be providing additional services from an individual from his company. And we're getting that at a reduced, at a lower rate. So that actual, the 64 that you see for the DG networks is all of their services. And that includes another part-time technician that's going to be onsite.
Nice.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any changes that people want to see at this stage or? We're comfortable for March 11?
Sorry, I do have another question.
Okay.
On page four, under the salary principal AFM, is a curriculum 5,000? Is that just in the wrong line?
No, Jenny represents the district in two different consortiums. One is the Blackstone Valley Curriculum Coordinators Consortium, and the other is the Blackstone Valley Professional Development Consortium. The other school systems have assistant supes or director of teaching and learning that attend all of those. We don't have that. In my first year, I went to, I went to all of those. I can't, I couldn't do that. It was, it's too many meetings. So with Jenny's expertise and her former work as an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, I asked her if she would take those on and all the additional work that goes with it. Because I was out of the district too much, frankly. The consortiums are great, being part of all like the smaller districts, but there's just two, there's one for everything. And it's, you know, there's just too many. But then if you don't go to them, you don't have the opportunity for shared professional development. So then like the teachers lose out. Cause we talked about, well, maybe we just back out of some of these, but then the teachers can't go to the joint PD that, that they do. It's, it's like a catch 22 kind of thing.
So I, am I, you can hear me?
Yep.
I can't find my line by, the, the budget line by line for last year. I looked for it earlier today.
I actually did too. Did we not get one?
I think we might not have, but Matt, I have a big question for you for the, so the one we got an email today is 52 pages. And the one I could find for 2019 is 140 pages. So did, did we use a different program to run it? Or am I, or did we get a different version today?
I'd have to see the way that the report was run. It could simply be the, like the landscaping of the paper. It could be.
Wasn't the other one horizontal?
Yeah, I believe.
It was landscape.
And I think that one had a couple of alternate comparisons. I believe when we were walking through, when we first went and did that line by line, we were looking at what we were proposing at that point as compared to what we had originally proposed. And we were looking at multiple lines. So they went across, they went across the page in the landscape platform. So, and then it generated a lot more pages.
You should have had, it was landscape and you should have had, it was, there was a couple of fiscal years. And then, and then we highlighted all the things that we were going to change based on the projections made on prior fiscal years. And then there was the current year. So there were a few different.
So this one does not have the, the other fiscal years. You're right.
Yeah, just this year.
I, I was like, wow, Matt, really like. I really thought you did a lot of.
I tried to condense it. I tried to condense it. It's, it's partly my condensing of it and making it simpler to read. And then it's also just last columns.
It's definitely simpler to read, but it's harder to compare. Like you can't go pay, you definitely can't go by page. I was just scrolling through to find athletics, talking about middle school sports. So I, because I, I obviously none of us want to, we want to make sure that nothing is missing on that end. That we've never talked about, obviously. I didn't even notice the, the boys tennis like Tammy mentioned. So that's what makes me nervous. Having a new athletic director, you worry like, well, maybe he didn't know we had boys tennis, you know? So we just need to make sure that we still have those opportunities in there.
Absolutely. I can, I can confirm with Robert that all of the teams are accounted for.
I mean, I would, I would assume when he did his budget, he went, he, he got from the coaches what they need too, right?
He did. And when Jason and I met with him initially, he went over the number, he reviewed numbers with us. It was, it was some time ago now.
Well, and he may not know there used to be a boys tennis, cause he would have had a tennis. But you know, I mean, we have not, have we had anyone ask us to have a boys tennis?
I don't, I don't know. I, I just was wondering if, here's the thing, you can't sign up for something if it's not offered. So.
Well, yeah, but we, we have things that haven't been offered in the past and people come to us and ask us if we can offer though, you know? It's, it's like, we didn't have hockey before and we, and I'll name names, but Tara knew that kids were coming up that wanted to play hockey. And what could we do to, to create hockey? So, you know, I guess I would push back on families and parents. If you want boys tennis, somebody needs to approach somebody to say, we want boys tennis. You know, it's like, I don't feel as a committee that we have a responsibility for budget, to budget every sport that we've ever had in the district. If we don't have people asking to do those sports. So, so yes, Tammy, I think you're right. If you don't know there's a boys tennis, you're not going to ask for it. But people have asked for other things and people need to advocate, I think, when, when, you know, they, they've got programs that they want to see. They need to advocate, just like, you know, the questions arose about, about swimming. And you asked, you know, Robert to look into the swimming co-op again. I think, you know, if, if there are folks that want to play boys tennis, I think they have a responsibility to ask the questions if they don't see that it exists. But I don't think we should fund something that then goes.
About the co-ops, because I didn't see a co-op, any line item for co-op swim, but I also didn't see it for hockey. So I didn't know how that's, how those things are accounted for financially, if, if at all. If it's just like, you need players and we're letting our players and they pay your user fee. I think that's the only responsibility we have. I don't, I, I'm actually surprised that I don't know that answer, but I don't. But it's not in the budget. So.
So I know Tara just asked about the $5,000 curriculum line. One of the complex, so on both lines, on JFK and AFM, there's a travel stipend. But that's for, that's both, are there, are, are we really paying two buildings worth of travel stipends to one principal? Or is that just?
Which pay which amounts?
So JFK and AFM both have.
Yeah, I typically split the travel stipend between them for the one, for the one principal. But if you, if you direct me to the page you're looking at, I could.
Page three, four. So it's $300, principal JFK, $300 travel.
Yeah, it's a $600 travel. It's a $600 travel stipend that the, that the principals receive. If you notice the one above.
Am I reading this wrong? On Millville, it's six, it's 300?
Yeah.
Am I reading that wrong?
It's split, it was, it was coded as mileage reimbursement and travel. There are two, in Millville, it's, it is 600. So if you look at on page three, the, the line is travel principal's office. And it's next.
That has like postage, water. Is that the right, or am I looking at the wrong spot?
No, if you, if you look at page three.
A mileage reimbursement.
On the left side, it's the fourth line code up. If you look, that's the 0105005. That 005 is the location code for Millville. So that's the principal's travel at Millville and the total is 600.
Jason, does the budget allow for department chairs in the high school?
Yes.
Thank you.
Put those in.
Good.
Good. I guess the same thing as Erin's getting at with the principal's stuff, like the dues, I think because JFK and AFM, Matt, you mentioned how they have listed as two, two separate schools with the Department of Ed. If we went to one, could we get those dues down? Although AFM's 2,000, JFK's only one. Millville's only one.
The dues aren't by school though, right? Are they by principal? By person?
Yeah, the dues, the dues are typically by, by principal.
But by school. So Christine, like MES has the dues for a thousand dollars, JFK has dues for a thousand, AFM dues are 2,000.
It could just be because of a different membership at, at that level. It's not like a, we try to build it. Remember when we built the zero, starting at zero base, we tried to build it from what we need. It was, it wasn't like each school gets a thousand and you do what you want with it for dues. It was what are the dues that you guys are paying and what is the cost of those? So that should be what's in there.
When we started the meeting, Jason, you had brought up the 3.7 for Blackstone and 1.35 for Millville.
Right.
That's probably close with these reductions, but those aren't the new numbers, correct?
Those are with these reductions.
Okay. So the report we got on 211 had these reductions?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And that was an overall increase for our budget. I think it was 2.73.
And I just checked with Robert and he said that he was aware of the interest in the girls tennis team. He's not aware of any interest. And he's asking if, if there is an interest. So to Jane's point, I think that's, that's what happened. This is just via text though, so that's my inter, that's what, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but he said, he said he found out that the girls tennis team has a number of girls interested in playing. And he asked if there's any interest with the boys. He's not aware of it.
So we're at a 2.7% increase on our total budget. Is, is the sheet we got last, at our last meeting, still the same percentages to the towns? So are we comfortable with, with this?
That was my question.
Starting point for our open hearing or? What vibe are you getting from the towns with these numbers, Jason?
So I know Millville, you know, understood the numbers and, you know, so they appreciated the work that went into that. Blackstone was concerned, understanding that the increase on there in the 3.7, that 170,000 of that is from the minimum local contribution being increased by the state. And then the additional increase from, from us, from our request was 50,000. So 170 of that total, $220,000 increase is coming from the state's assignment of their MLC. They seem to understand, you know, with the breakdown of the numbers, but they're concerned about the, you know, right now their concern was around, I believe the number was 700,000. It was somewhere between 6 and 700,000. Kind of in the red in terms of their balancing your budget for next year. However, I know they still had to do work on looking at their revenue streams and, you know, certified free cash and looking at ways to kind of close that gap.
Yeah, Lauren, Lauren is their assistant treasurer and she was very clear that they still have work to be done in new revenues. And, and as Jason mentioned, their free cash.
We did share with them, as we do with the Millville group, that the school committee has worked very hard to make sure that the budgets that are put forward are, you know, viable from both communities and that, you know, they wouldn't bring, would bring forward that wasn't. from both communities and that, you know, they wouldn't bring, would bring some forward that wasn't. But the, the interim town manager Greg had, had asked a couple of times and repeated, so he said, so the, so the additional, the increase in additional is 50,000. The big increase of 170 is from the state MLC. And Matt and I confirmed that a couple of times, so.
As someone new to this, why is the state's MLC number so much higher this year for Blackstone? Like what change is that?
It, it's all based on town records. So it's all based on the town's ability to pay the low percentage of low income people in the town, the percentage of new housing that might have been in the town. You know, it's essentially, it's all town based. It's not school based, it's all town based.
You know, we also don't know, I hate to even say it, but I think it's important to mention. If the, the latest federal stimulus package goes through, you know, there is a, there is a very large amount of money in there for municipalities, state government, schools. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. So who knows, you know, at the end of the day, if that, I know that's being debated on the House floor. But I will say the last, it's called the S, you know, the S R money, S R 1, S R 2. That money's come through once it's been approved. And I, you know, Matt, I don't know if you would agree with this or not, but fairly quickly in terms of its availability. That frankly, I've been somewhat impressed with in terms of just the turnaround on that. So I don't know, I don't know if, you know, by March 16th, when we meet with the Board of Selectmen in Blackstone, that, you know, an S R 3 package, or I don't know what they'll even call it frankly, if it will be called that. But what, if that passes through the House and the Senate, what that will look like for, for schools.
Are you saying we should have a wish list?
No, I just, you know, when I, when I think about, you know, when I think about this situ, I, I know to the committee, this year's budget cycle has been, has been a tough one because we're concerned about, you know, the revenue side of things for the towns and, and we get that. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know what that's going to do for municipal governments. I don't know what it's going to do for school districts. It certainly can only help for that matter.
Yeah, so the trend, the trend has been that when the government releases the, the financial packages, they're, they're more short-lived initially. And then as they realize, you know, more revenues and, and sources of funding, they then, the, the new packages cover further into the year. I know that sounds a little confusing. So for example, this year, when they released the S R grant, the first S R 1, they told districts that all of that money had to be expended by December 30th of 2000. Then as they became confident that there was going to be an S R 2, they rescinded that December 30th deadline and said, no, you can use S R 1 all the way into September of 21, which will take us into the beginning of next year. When they introduced S R 2, they said, you can apply for S R 2 either for this fiscal year or for next fiscal year. So there are a number of districts that are going to be trying to apply that funding or at least portions of that funding, even to this year's, this year's expenses. We are going to be applying for that and, and applying for it and applying it to next year's budget. But as Jason mentioned, as they introduce more stimulus, it will probably be to start next year and then potentially roll into 20, you know, further into 23 or even carry into the next year. I know this is circling back, but an update, Robert texted me and said, I haven't heard from any male students being interested in tennis. In 2019, it wasn't on the list of sports offered.
Anyone else? So we're comfortable with this moving forward to the 11th of March with no changes? Few questions, but no changes. Okay. So the E and D, just one more time with the surplus from this year, with our new certified number, our surplus from this year minus 140, you still expect us to be certified over 800,000 next January? Am I right?
Around there. Well, I mean, that's, you know, we're projecting at this point, but I mean, that's.
Yeah, I, I don't want to conclusively say yes, next year. That'll be what we certify at, but it definitely, if things stay on track, which they should, that seems reasonable.
I just think that's good news because I was like, there's no way we can spend 140,000.
We do, I do want to mention though, I think it would be important to note that with the commissioner's, you know, announcement today of schools having, you know, have to reopen to, you know, full in person in some time in October. And that's providing the Board of Education approves it.
I don't think you mean October.
Did I say October?
You did.
Okay. Sorry, I'm on hour 13. I thought I said April. By April and then middle schools behind that and then high school, you know, behind that. You know, I don't, Matt and I were discussing this also. You know, I don't know what the implications are going to be on, you know, might we need a few more partner teachers or air purifiers or I don't know. You know, as we continue to move forward with our planning. So I do just want to plant that seed that it, you know, as we're talking about next year and what E and D might look like when it's certified and, you know, what our end of year projections might look like. It is possible that those numbers could be a little lower based on what it's going to take for us to get fully reopened.
Similarly, there's also the question mark on the capital projects. And while we can, while we can say, well, we'll defer certain pieces, there may be things that are identified as priority that we really decide this needs to be addressed. So that, that might tap into the E and D as well. That's why I'm just hesitant to say absolutely.
No, but, but, but to Erin's point, we, we, we will not be 411 minus 140. We will have significant other.
Absolutely not, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely not.
Yep.
I think Karen got booted and she's in the waiting room trying to get back in.
Sorry to Karen.
I don't have that.
Alex, Alex, is there somebody in the waiting room?
I can't let her in.
I'm trying to come in on a different device as well.
No.
As far as E and D, it actually will go down for this year. It'll just get up again once we recertify whatever number we put back, right? So we are going to be down to to 71.
But see, we don't ever go down, like we, so, so Tara, it doesn't ever go down. So I mean, I mean, well, it goes down, but it doesn't ever, so it's reported at 411. So 411 is there. And then, and then until it's recertified again next year, which would be, then the 140 would come up, but the other stuff would go in.
Got it.
It disappears.
I, I make Matt crazy because I look at everything as like a checkbook. I'm like.
Yeah, and it's not.
You have to show that you spent it.
No, and it's not.
I do the exact same thing, Tara. Like the exact same, I make Matt nuts for that. Like, yeah, but we spent 100. He's like, well, no, we really didn't. I'm like, yeah, I wrote it down.
Recorded once a year.
Right, okay.
It's only sort of, so it's only, so it's like, so no. Yes and no.
Right.
We just have, but we do have to be careful with our pre-purchases. Unless we are taking that 140 out, we have to just keep reminding ourselves not, not to spend that money. It's like, it would be like if it's your own checkbook. Like, ooh, I know my refund's coming, but.
Charge it.
We're good.
Yeah, and when, as we get closer, and other committee knows, we'll have better, like tighter projections. And, and those are conservative, so we'll see what happens.
Yep, yep.
We are okay to proceed with what we have? Are folks comfortable with that?
Not hearing anything different.
Schedule another one.
There are needs, so yeah, we need them.
Are we going to schedule another budget workshop for after our open hearing?
No, I think our plan is to is our plan to certify that night.
The hearing will be on March 11th. And then we have a committee meeting usually right after. I think the committee usually certifies after the public hearing.
Yeah, the same day on the 11th.
Yep.
Well, that's what you've done in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, since we moved to these new, new dates to move up to get town numbers at a earlier time.
So essentially we're saying tonight that we're comfortable bringing this budget, the 2.7% increase to the town meetings.
Yep, that's what I asked. Yep, yep.
Do we know the dates of the FinCom hearing and everything else we need to go to?
We know that we'll be at Blackstone Board of Selectmen on March 16th. That's the only one I know of so far.
Who's the host of this meeting?
Alex.
Alex, can you please let me in?
Hey, he's.
Karen, Karen said she's waiting in the waiting room too. She just texted me.
I, I and I just, I put it in the chat, but I don't know that he's, I don't know.
She said she's on the Zoom link.
Yeah, it says, please wait, the meeting host will let you in soon, budget workshop.
None of us are the hosts, so.
Does anyone have, yeah, there's no other way to get, to Alex.
When is town meeting? Do we know?
Blackstones are usually the day after Memorial Day. The Tuesday.
Like two weeks before.
I think Millville's usually the first Monday in May.
They might be on the town websites, I'll be honest.
Have they done that yet? They might have.
Set a date.
I was trying to call Karen to see if I could get her on the phone and put her on speaker, but she didn't answer.
I wonder if they'll move them because of, to be outside, like.
Yeah.
Because May will still be.
We'll be vaccinated by then.
You think?
So actually, when Jason, when you mentioned the commissioner saying about schools, April, obviously that all depends on, right? Teachers agreeing to it, vaccinations is a lot.
Isn't it, that doesn't, it doesn't, it's not, no, it's, the director goes open this elementary schools by April period the end. It doesn't.
Well. So what is your plan with that, Jason?
What he, what he is, what he is doing.
I heard what he said, what is your plan?
Yeah. Yeah, I know, we'll, we'll have a full comprehensive plan laid out for our March 11th meeting to discuss.
We, we authorized Jason to, to open up with Unit A. So I don't know that that has happened yet, so.
No, the first meeting is Wednesday, a week from tomorrow. So, and I'll have all the survey results. We've had 500 families answer, 125 staff answer the survey so far. So. Yep.
Millville town meeting is May 10th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, what the commissioner's doing is just removing what will qualify for time on learning. So he's, he's eliminating the whole hybrid thing that won't qualify anymore. So you've got to be either 100% in person or you have to be 100% remote.
I saw a link today, I think it was the Mass Association of School Committees to recheck the wording. I think he was, that they had stated it's up to each superintendent and school committee.
It should be, they, they didn't say it is up to, that it should be.
Oh, they were.
That their, yeah, that their stance is that it, it shouldn't be at the hands of the super, at the commissioner. It should be in the hands of the each district, but.
And what I think what the, what the Board of Ed will do if they approve it is they'll write language of what qualifies for time on learning and then force the hands of the local districts to make sure they meet time on learning by backing out of the pieces that don't qualify anymore. It will be one of those, you know, like, what, what do they change your drinking age? Like, you know, you don't have to change it to 21, but you're not going to get your highway funds if you don't. You know, I think it's like those kinds of things, right? Like, yeah.
Well, I hope they have like a secret stash of vaccines that they're going to give to all of the teachers in the state.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Immediately.
I don't.
Then someone else said that they talk about, you don't need a second vaccine anymore. They're saying the one's going to do the job. So it's a matter of time to hear that official.
That's the J vaccine, the Johnson and Johnson, if it's approved, yeah, it's just one dose. If it's approved, you know, Saturday, I think they'll know.
It's crazy. Just it changes daily is what I mean by crazy. Like you just don't know what to follow. Alex obviously left us.
You guys, I've, I've sent chats to him and I've sent chats generally and then him directly, but.
He just, he, I'm in on my phone now, so if somebody just let me in.
Okay.
Karen maybe.
All, all is better.
Okay. Is that the girls game, Tammy? Or it's?
No, it's the boys game.
Oh, okay. It's okay.
Is there anything?
Anything else?
Is anybody else doing the Dr. Seuss reading day?
No, I am not.
Matt Dovell? Yep.
Had to say no.
Me too, badly. It's my favorite thing to do, but they moved it away from Fridays, so I can't do it anymore.
Have to do it to show what my.
I still have my Dr. Seuss hats and my little Horton here's a who elephant.
Last time I did it, I thought they thought I was inciting a riot in the preschool. That's how well received it was, so.
Is Blaine going to zoom in and read again this year?
I think so.
Nice.
Next Tuesday, I think, right?
Yeah, I think so. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
By Sarah, second by Tammy, all those in favor? Hi. Anybody opposed and want to stay on longer? Just make sure you're careful what you say.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.